To call to order a meeting of the Summers Board of Selectmen. It's a regular meeting, December first, two thousand twenty-two. I'd like to start off the meeting by asking you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation under our invisible liberties and justice for all. Thank you. In the room tonight, we have on my right, Selectman Meyer, on my left, Selectman Schmidt. We also have CFO Mike Marinaccio, and my right, and Brian Whistenger, Deputy Finance Director. On my left, I have Director Kamala Flure, Operations Director. In the audience, we have Director Todd Rowland from Public Works, Director Dan Parisi from Land Use, and we have Glenn Reynolds, who is the Emergency Management Director, also a member of the Fire Department. Probably the longest tenure of anyone there, right? Is that right? How many years?
Twenty-three, four times, three times.
Excellent, beautiful. Also, we have in the audience some members of the public. We have Dan Henkley, Colleen Reedy, and Tom Corinzo. So, welcome, everyone. And the next item on the agenda is public comments. So, anyone that has any comments they'd like to make tonight, now's the time to do it. There's a microphone right here. Just step forward and just have a seat, relax. Tell us what you want to tell us.
You name an address first.
Yeah, that's helpful, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm Corinzo, nineteen Monroe Banner.
Thank you.
I am a local builder here in town, and I'm here to talk about what's been going on with our Land Use Department. It seems as though we've got some pretty unhappy individuals in there, and I'm concerned about it. I talked to Tim a little bit about it, and I was hoping maybe I could get a little bit of information as to why what's happening is happening. We've got two building officials from Stafford that are here alone. I don't think either of them are too happy with our town right now. And we've also now got a sanitarian who had a pretty bad meeting apparently last night. So, I'm just trying to have a conversation and understand what's going on. It directly affects me and my business.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to, like to say that we appreciate you and your business to begin with. You're one of the premier builders in town, and probably the most active builder at the moment for the last several months, makes sense, I've been on board. As you know, our, the building inspectors we have are employees of the town of Stafford, and we have a contractual agreement with Stafford to have their services twenty-one hours a week.
Right.
Which is what we thought was fit the bill as far as what we needed. As you also know, we addressed this issue very early on, Board of Selectmen did, with regards to the vacancy of a building inspector when our prior building inspector was asked to leave the office. I'm not totally familiar with the level of discomfort that these building inspectors have. They talk to you more than they talk to me, needless to say.
Well, I see them all the time.
They see you in the field. They come in to see me maybe five minutes every two weeks. And I just check in with them, and sometimes I go down there when I know they're there and chat with them, see how things are going. We try to address their concerns, all their concerns, because in my mind, they're, and I think the other Selectmen will agree with me, they're incredibly valuable part of our workforce here. They have brought in significant levels of revenue unprecedented as far as prior building inspectors product, economic products. And, you know, I'm doing whatever I can to see that they are happy, not just happy, but content with working for our town. It's a very important relationship we have with Stafford, and we can't afford to lose it. Because number one, we, first of all, they're doing a great job. They're just great professionals and got a great work ethic. And their problem is, they're out in the field so much, I never get to see them. So, if they have complaints, I don't hear them. They don't walk into my office. I asked to see them today, and nobody showed up.
Yeah.
They were here, I think, from noon until four, but probably in the field most of the time. But I was here and available for them to speak to. I'm not aware, you know, we've, again, every time they address me, I try to speak to them, find out if they've got any issues, deal with the issues immediately.
You're aware that Glenn went to Stafford Selectmen about a month ago, wanted to terminate the agreement?
Based on what?
I'm not sure based on what.
Yeah, I mean, it-
He's discontent with our town and the way it's being managed. That's, well, those are-
Yeah.
You're aware of it, though, right? Because you and I have talked about this.
Yeah, I'm interested to hear, I'd like to hear from Glenn directly about that, how he's dissatisfied with how the town is being managed.
Yeah.
Because he's never, he never approached me with that, so that's something that maybe he's talking to you about. I know there was an issue about when we're trying to, we have a new system, cyber, it's a, what's the system called?
We have Office three sixty-five now.
Which is a-
It's a web-based-
Greatly enhanced-
It requires dual-factor authentication.
Right, so it requires this dual-factor authentication, and when Mr. Whistenger spoke to them about that, they had a problem with that because they only had one phone, and we explained they needed to have an app on their phone in order to comply with this because this had to do with cybersecurity, something that's really important to this town, and they're part of our system, so they need to be part of that system. So, they, they-
Well, we did work with them to make it more user-friendly for them and-
We got the two I-
So, at least they still have the cybersecurity level of protection that we need, and they still are able to get the products they needed, so.
Yeah, we got our IT people to speak to their IT people directly to solve the problem. So, we solved that problem. I don't know whether they're still upset about that or not. I have no clue.
I haven't heard anything since then, so.
But, you know, I think, you know, we as a Board of Selectmen are very concerned about meeting their needs because they're meeting our needs.
Right.
As far as the sanitarians concerned, I, I'm not so, you know, I think that's a different subject. I mean, we did have a Selectmen's meeting last night, which I thought was much longer than I expected, but I thought it was very productive, what we ended up with, as to a path-
I tried to watch that, by the way. Excuse me.
We didn't have, we didn't have it recorded.
How come?
Yeah, she unexpectedly went home sick.
And it was a special meeting, and it was, it was just to, just to address Luigi Sartori to come in and speak to the Board so that we could just get a better understanding of services that he's currently providing and what it is we as a Board expect going forward. So, that's what that was all about. I think it was very productive. That's all I can tell you about this.
I don't know that Andrea feels the same way. I don't want to speak for anybody. I want to speak for myself. My concern is, if I don't have a sanitarian, if I don't have a building inspector, my job site stops.
Yeah.
So, I'm here as a resident, as a business owner, to understand what you guys are going to do to help me get that department a little more content because they're not.
Okay, first of all, I appreciate you being here and speaking up for your concerns because they're important to us as well.
Right.
As far as whether they're content or not, we're doing, as far as I'm concerned, we're doing whatever we can to let them know that they're appreciated, their services are appreciated. We have great respect for them as professionals, and I think we have a pretty good understanding as to what our expectations are and what they're delivering. So, I, I mean, not everybody's happy every day in their job, but-
I'm not happy in most states in mine.
But, you know, my job is not to make people happy, it's to make sure that the-
Well, it's to make sure that they stay put, so we can get the services that we're paying for in this town.
Those three employees are critical employees, and as you know, when this Board of Selectmen first came on board, that was our number-one priority, was to figure out how we're going to handle the sanitarian's job because we're going to have a vacancy, someone is leaving, having been here for thirty-five years or more, and the fact that we had a building inspector that was being asked to leave, needed to be replaced, hard professional to find, we advertised, got no response.
Right.
We just lucked into an agreement with Stafford where they said, hey, by the way, we've got, we've got two people that are qualified as building inspectors, and we can work a deal out with you, and said, hey, great. So, it's, so they, and I've talked to them before about the important job that they're doing and how much they're appreciated, and they're indeed top professionals, they're doing great work. So, I mean, I, I'm trying to, you know, they haven't come in to see me lately if they have complaints.
Do you guys go see them? Is there communication?
I go see, yeah. Well, I go down, I go down to the other side, they're on the other side of the building, but I go down there often, at least three or four times a day. But they're only in the office between, say, eight and eight fifteen or eight twenty in the morning. I'm not here at that time. I'm not, their schedule today was they were coming in from noon to four. So, I asked Dan Parisi, I think, asked Andrea, who was down there at the time, to have him come in and, or have, it was Mark, I think, that was in today. He didn't show up, he didn't come in. So, again, I'm, I'm there, I'm available, my door's open. I'd love to talk to them if they've got issues.
I mean, I talk, talk to Andrea, you know, regularly about a variety of issues, and I don't know, I thought we had a good relationship. She seems to be through-
I just happened to run into her this morning. I was picking up some paperwork, and she was very upset. Again, I didn't get to watch the meeting. I was going to try and send. I couldn't get to it-
Yeah, yeah.
About this meeting last night. What happened last night?
I, to be honest with you, I didn't realize that she was upset, you know, after the meeting. She didn't give me any indication as such. I didn't have a chance to talk to her. I talked to Dan today, but I didn't talk to her before I, you know, but I mean, I would be more than happy to sit down and talk to her and find out what upset, what upset her.
Right.
You know, what the concerns were and-
What was the meeting about?
The meeting was about the delivery of the Health Department services to the town. What is, we're receiving, what we're paying for, what our needs are now and in the future, and what we need to do to improve health, healthcare services, public health. That's what it was about.
It was an hour and a half.
An hour and fifteen minutes. It's been, well, again, we hadn't seen Luigi Santore. He'd never addressed a Selectmen's meeting before. One of the problems we have is that on Thursday nights when we have our meetings, he works until seven-thirty in Wyndham, I think is where he is. He's a, he's a sanitarian in Wyndham, and so he's not available. So, he said, okay, fine, well, when are you available? And he said he could be available on Wednesday night this week. He would leave work at four-thirty, so, okay, let's, depending upon giving you time for traffic and the drive, we'll start having a meeting at six o'clock. So, the meeting was very specific. It was only related to the services that he was providing, but because he's part of the Land Use Department, and of course, he also worked very closely with Andrea, who is our sanitarian.
Right.
She was there as well as Dan Parisi, the Director of Land Use.
Tom, I would say, I mean, number one, thanks for coming down. I mean, it's extremely valuable to us to hear from residents, to get the feedback, a bunch of things. I mean, number one, we're kind of going outside the scope of public comment here. I think, though, it is appropriate for us to add this topic to a future agenda.
Okay.
To have maybe more of a discussion on it, because I think you do bring up some good points and some points I'm very interested in hearing more about. And, you know, I would echo what, what the other Selectmen said about the meeting last night. You know, we, right now, we have a sanitarian with a part-time health department. We're one of just a handful of towns in the state to have a part-time health department. And, you know, as a builder, you know, most either are part of a regional health district or part of a full-time.
Which we don't really want to be a part of if we don't have to be.
Well, it's, it's a bigger, it's a bigger conversation. So, of course, the construction industry, you know, sanitarian, I mean, that's one piece of public health, but there's a whole nother, very large, important piece, community health, you know, things like infectious disease, the COVID response, those things. You know, unfortunately, a town like Summers with a part-time health district, we have not, you know, we don't employ, like, health nurses. We don't have health educators. We don't do, like, community surveillance of things, which are services other towns get and services by law we're actually required to provide for our residents.
From, like, North Central, for instance?
Well, North Central provides it. They're a health district.
Right.
Yes. I mean, South Windsor is an independent, full-time health department, municipal. Manchester is a municipal health department. There's different models, okay? But the part-time model that Summers has, we're one of very few in the state to have this model. So, I think the conversation is around, you know, how do we better serve our residents in a way more than just inspections?
Yeah.
You know, or community health, you know, those types of conversations, you know, how do we do a better job as a town? So, that's-
I just raised my hand. I was about to say-
If you could just, the microphone's right there. Just use that.
Hi, I'm Danny. I do work for Tom.
Yep.
What's your last name?
Henkley.
And where do you live?
One seventy-eight Highland View Drive.
Thank you.
And it's been working very well, hasn't it?
What?
The health district in Summers?
Well, no. So, again, it's, you're thinking of it just through the narrow lens of environmental health, which is restaurant inspections and, like, septic, that type of work, right? The public health is actually a whole much larger-
I, I, I understand. I've worked with North Central, I, you know, so I'm-
Yeah, and I'm on their board, and I'm on North Central Health Board. I represent the town of Burn, just in full transparency.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I have, I have a very deep familiarity of there as well. But it's the more comprehensive services, and how can we leverage that here in town to better serve our residents?
Because, you know, a few years ago, they wanted to get rid of Steve Jacobs.
Who's they?
Who's they, yeah.
The, the town was going to, remember, we all came in and we spoke for-
How long ago was this?
Like we are, I don't know, I forget how many years, but it was, you can look back and you'll see.
So, you had, you had some concerns about Jacobs, okay?
No, well, they were going to try to get rid of him.
Who's they?
No one, no one was ever trying to get rid of Steve Jacobs.
Well, that was what it-
All we were ever doing was looking at options for help.
Because all the contractors got together, and we came and we said, you know, we liked Steve, we don't want to go to North Central because, you know, he was, he was, it's a good-
Yeah, fine, okay, all right.
And, you know, it sounds like what you guys are trying to do to Andrea, maybe. I don't know.
No, no, no. The thing that we're talking about here is not dealing with that. In fact, we weren't talking about the things that Andrea was doing, you know, with, and as the things that Mr. Kenny pointed out, we're talking about additional things that the town needed to do for the public, things that were not necessarily with builders, you know what I'm saying, in businesses. It had to do with the health of the town residents, and, you know, what type of health we were delivering to those people and what type of services we were offering to them. And it also included the kids at the school. You know, that was a big concern during the pandemic, you know, as to what was going on during that time period, you know, as to, and so those are the things we were talking about. We weren't talking about the things that Andrea does on, you know, a weekly basis for, with the builders and other people in town. We're talking about adding additional responsibilities.
See, I like, you know, I like a small town. That's why I live here.
That's why most of us live here, you know?
Right, you know?
They were all residents, yes.
You know, it's, it's just, I like to keep it small, and it's, you know, you start getting, and then you, you know, then our tax base and everything is going to go crazy.
Didn't we approach the health districts when Steve gave his notice? And didn't, weren't we told basically by all of them that they didn't have time or room for us? Was it, wasn't that the first approach? No?
No.
I don't, I don't believe so, no.
Not at all. So, North Central would have taken us in at the time if, if, uh-
Yeah, I think they would have.
That's really proud of I knew they were interested.
There was also discussions, as he said, with the town in South Windsor, you know, and forming a partnership with them, so.
Because I know Mike Corona very well, and at that time, I think back to Steve, I don't think they could even handle another town.
That's what we were told.
Well, I sit on their board, so, I mean, I have some insight there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I sit on their board.
So, we get wrong information, then?
Yeah, no, it's not correct. I mean, so, let's, I think we can add to a future agenda item. I think you bring up some good points. You know, it is, I mean, like I said, the Operations Director was expected to be sick yesterday. None of us know how to operate a recording. You know, the meeting was public, open, I wish you attended. Honestly, I wish you were there.
I was going to come last night. I couldn't make it, and I was going to try and watch it and found out I couldn't watch it.
It was a free conversation. We typically record all of our meetings, and it just, there was no one, you know, no one to record it, unfortunately, at the last minute, but, you know, so.
I think we hear you about, you know, the relationship with the Land Use. I'm very clear on that. And I, and I have tried personally, work, you know, talking to the people in the Land Use Office on a regular basis, trying to be aware of their concerns. I did not know that Andrea was upset today. I just saw her passing in the halls. I didn't know that she was upset about that. So, I certainly will reach out to her in the future, and I appreciate the work that she does, and they all do there, and so, you know, we'll make an effort to make sure that they're happy. Yeah, and I don't, I would be very disappointed, and that, that is one of my biggest concerns, is that sometimes things are said publicly at this meeting that people take offense to.
Yeah.
And, and then, and I know from talking to these people that they've not necessarily been happy with some of the things that have been said at some of the Selectmen's meetings. So, I understand that, and that's why I've been working hard to go in and talk to them to make sure that they are happy and that they do want to work for the town because I do appreciate what they're doing, and I want to keep that relationship positive, you know what I'm saying?
Not only that, those positions will be extremely difficult to fill.
Oh, we are aware, um, we-
At least we do lose these two people. There are towns all over the place looking for these individuals, as everybody knows.
Oh, I understand, and that's, that's why it concerns me even the more, especially-
That's why I'm here.
Yeah, especially when it comes to the building inspector. We know those people aren't available.
Right.
We know many towns don't even have them because they can't find one.
Right.
And they're doing a very nice job, too.
Yeah, so.
They're doing a great job.
Well, I understand. They came to my house and did a fantastic job.
Yeah.
So, I know from personal experience how well they did.
Okay. Well, it can be added to a future agenda. I'm not sure how that works. I don't know. Yeah, great. I'd love to come back and-
Beautiful.
Hear some more about it.
Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, my info is now on the website, but this is my card. I know they're adding me, so.
I did. I looked at that, and it's there.
But you put it up, okay, I didn't, that's my info.
What's that, the email address?
Yeah, I added it yesterday.
Okay, I can get this up there now.
Because I noticed yesterday it still wasn't up there, and I remember, I remember Colleen saying it wasn't there, and I checked, and I've added it yesterday.
It was there before.
Okay, no problem.
Is there any other public comment just for tonight? Okay, thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have presentations by First Selectmen. There are a couple of things I'd like to mention. Number one, we have a holiday festival and tree lighting ceremony coming up on the tenth of this month, Saturday, it's a week from this Saturday, starts at four PM and lasts until seven PM. There are lots of activities that include the Honors Choir from the high school singing, Girl Scout carol singing. We have professional carolers that are going to be on site in uniform, historic Victorian uniforms. We have Renata Bowers saying the, repeating the Night Before Christmas story. Santa's going to be here. This is pictures, we have photos with Santa. This is a great event for families. We did this last year, and it was a tremendous success. And needless to say, I think it's going to become a tradition. We'll do it every year. It's something the town loves to do. It brings everyone into the middle of town. We have events at Piedmont Hall as well as Kiwi Fuller across the street, and then the town green in front of Kiwi Fuller next to the Senior Center, and encourage people to come to this. There's also additional information available on Instagram, Facebook, the town website with regards to this. We also sent out through the Summers Connect newsletter two weeks ago a notice of this event, so hopefully, and which went to every household in town, every mailing house, every, I'm a household that has a mailing address. And we also are going to be handing out this brochure at both the Town Hall, the Town Library, the Senior Center, and local businesses will also have copies, so. We're hopeful, we're hopeful that we have a good turnout. We, I just looked at the weather. It looks like it's going to be cold and clear. It's exactly what we'd like.
You're pretty good to know that, Karen.
You know, I, I've got, I've got connections in the Weather Service, yeah.
No way. It could change in the next half hour.
I used to work for NOAA. They run the Weather Service. They're pretty good, they really are. At least, we're talking about a ten-day forecast, so. Anyway, okay, so that's the first item I wanted to mention. The second item is Monday, the twelfth of December, we initiate negotiations under the fire union contract, firefighters' union contract, to bringing in part-time firefighters. So, that's going to be occurring a week from this coming Monday. On the seventeenth of December, we have something which we had, we've had for the last couple of years. It's called wreaths across America at the Center Cemetery. This is something that's occurring in hundreds of communities, if not thousands, around the country. It's a laying of wreaths on the graves of veterans. We actually have a ceremony at noon on Saturday, December seventeenth, at the Center Cemetery. We had probably forty or fifty people there last year. We expect at least double that this year. We have more wreaths. Wreaths can be purchased through the Veterans Affairs Office. Veterans Affairs Department is sponsoring this event. They did a great job last year. I'm sure it'll do a great job this year. And we have the police, local police department involved. We have the local American Legion Post one-on-one involved, and it should be great. It should start at noon and be done by probably twelve-thirty. So, I encourage people to attend that if they're interested. And those are the events I wanted to mention. Great. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Boards and Commissions, Appointments and Resignations. First item to address here is, it's not actually printed on your schedule, but it's, first is the resignation of Beth Frichette. She currently chairs the Economic Development Commission. She wants to resign as a mem, full-time member and come back on as an alternate member. So, she's basically just stepping aside. She's been, I don't know how many years she's been the chairman, but probably four or five. A few years. So, the first item would be to accept the resignation of Beth Frichette as a full-time member of the Economic Development Commission. And then it'll be followed by appointing her as an alternate member of the Economic Development Commission with the term expiring December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. So, we've got two motions we need here.
I'd be happy to make a motion to accept the resignation of Beth Frichette as the Chair of the EDC.
As a, as a full-time member of the committee. They elect their own chair, so.
Okay, okay, well, as a full-time member.
Great.
A second now.
Any further discussion? All those in support of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion passed. Just thank you. Next, we need a motion to appoint her as an alternate member of the Economic Development Commission.
I'd be happy to make that motion to appoint Beth Frichette as an alternate member of the Economic Development Commission with a term expiring on twelve, twenty-two, twenty-four.
Second now.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Next, we have the appointment of Ray Walters as a full member of the Economic Development Commission. Ray Walters approached me a couple of weeks ago. He's a, has his own business in town. He's a videographer, a very skilled individual, and he is very interested in sort of breathing new energy and life into the Economic Development Commission, and I personally think he'd be a great addition to the commission. We do have an opening, and so- And so, I guess, um, I don't know if anybody else knows Ray Walters. I think some people.
Oh, yeah, no, we do, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, he's a very well-known member of the community and, uh, he's a great professional, a very talented individual. And he's interested in economic development and throughout the town, that gets his own business.
Yeah, make a motion to appoint Ray Walters as a full-time member of the Economic Development Commission with a term expiring twelve, twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, to fill the vacancy of Beth Frichette.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next is the appointment of, uh, gentleman by the name of Shane Manning as an alternate on the zoning commission with a term expiring at December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, I had Mr. Manning's, uh, information added to your booklet tonight. He lives on, uh, nineteen Mulberry Lane here in town with his wife and three children. His children are young, eight, five, and two. He's a, uh, senior sales, uh, representative for a company called Tech Systems, which is the largest I T staffing company in North America. Uh, additionally is, um, involved with this, uh, family company. It's called Manning Capital L L C. It's a real estate investment company. So he knows, you know, he knows a fair amount about real estate. He's also young. He's energetic. I've met him. I've spoken with him. He's, uh, the kind of person that I think we need more of on commission, boards and commissions in town. So, uh, if you wanna look at, review his information, which I attached.
I looked at it.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I spoke to him as well. I mean, I think, I, I would agree. I think his background, um, you know, I think he, he has a lot to offer. I think he has a lot of, um, like you said, energy and, and he's excited to be here at Summers with his family and I think, uh, he'd be a good addition.
Excellent. A motion to, uh, appoint Mr. Manning?
Yeah, I'd be happy to make a motion to appoint Shane Manning as an alternate on the zoning commission, the term expiring twelve, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Second now.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Opportunity to add urgent agenda items. Do we have any of those to sign?
I have none.
No.
Great, thank you. Uh, finance department, transfers and appropriations.
Uh, so we have one that, uh, I sent out to you guys today. Uh, it's to transfer eight hundred dollars from dues and seminars to supplies, uh, to cover the cost of purchasing revised building code books, uh, for the building officials in town. Apparently the ones we have are, um, old and outdated and, uh, we have to, to get new ones. Um, it was an unplanned expense, um, at budget time, um, so they're, they wanna transfer into supplies to be able to cover the cost of them.
From which account?
Uh, from dues and seminars.
From the same, from building officials or land use?
Yeah, still within land use. Just transferring from one line item to another.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the, uh, transfer, um, to the building department or the land use department as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Any other transfers or appropriations?
No.
C F L's report, an update.
Have a few items and Brian's gonna handle those.
Passes, but he's got one there for you too, Mike, if you want a copy of it. Um, first item is, um, Hooker and Holcomb, um, passing out a, a draft of the letter that will go out to all volunteer firefighter retirees. Um, most likely on Monday or Tuesday, the letter will go out. Uh, we just approved the, the draft of it this week. Um, just wanted to give you guys an idea of, of the professionalism of the letter, what they'll be receiving, the services that, that Hooker and Holcomb will provide. Um, each of these, uh, each member with, um, the active, um, participants currently and terminated, or not terminated, but active vested, vested, uh, participants in the plan. Uh, we'll get a letter later, um, during the month of January showing them, uh, the benefits for them and giving them login credentials and so forth as well so that they can access the portal. Um, first payments to retirees will be made on January first, um, since the holiday and I believe it's a weekend. Um, they'll actually probably go in the Friday before, um, but they won't be made effective, uh, for January one. Uh, and then the online portal itself will become active on February first for all, um, active participants, retirees, invested members to view their information, any documents that they may have, um, make changes to their, um, tax status or bank account information or anything and, um, when people become eligible for, to, um, become, when people become eligible for retirement, they'll be able to request their pension distributions through the portal as well and, um, facilitate that, uh, much faster than, um, in person. Any questions on that?
So this seems like an improvement on, over the current, uh, services.
It is. This, this has been in place since July one for town employees, um, and town retirees and so forth. Um, so now this was phase two, moving the, the volunteer firefighter plan into that, that same.
Been well received by the town employees.
It has been. It has been.
Very good.
I see there's, uh, an opportunity for anybody that has any questions to.
Yep.
Reach, uh, the Hooker and Holcomb contact information.
Exactly. Yep.
I have to say this was a very smooth transition, uh, very professionally done. And we have a pretty good partner here.
You've both done a great job with this. I mean, it's long overdue. I think it's a huge enhancement and, uh, nice work.
Thanks.
Looks great.
Great, thank you.
Next is, um, fiscal twenty-four budget. Um, beginning to slowly see submissions trickling in. Um, department heads have until the sixteenth, fifteenth or sixteenth, whatever that Friday is, a couple more weeks to get their submissions in. Um, and we're scheduling meetings as they come in and, um, to review them. And then, uh, beginning to build the budget calendar for January so that you guys have an idea of who's going to be presenting and when. Um, I hope to have that completed before Christmas. Um, now I can email it out to you guys and, and you know what's coming down the pipeline in January. Um, and the fiscal twenty-two audit is, uh, substantially complete. I'm at a meeting with, or a teams meeting yesterday with our partner, um, to review a couple of very small minute items, make sure our ma, our numbers matched. Um, we anticipate a draft of the financials early next week, um, to begin the review process. Um, and, uh, anticipate presentation to the Board of Finance at their December twentieth meeting. Um, and as of now, and we anticipate no audit points to be reported, um, with this audit.
Good.
Good job.
Great.
Well done.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Presentation of scheduled payments. I've, I've reviewed these, uh, expenditures and I've asked a couple of questions, had them answered. I think they look good myself. Any, any questions by other selectmen?
No.
Okay. I have a motion to authorize the, uh, payment of these items.
I'd be happy to make a motion, uh, to, uh, authorize, uh, the payment of, uh, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand and twenty-two dollars and forty-six cents.
Second now.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Sign that. Next on the agenda, uh, is, uh, updates from boards and commissions. I don't think we have any of those. Pending business, we have none on the schedule, on the agenda. New business, local traffic authority requests, request to close Battle Street during the twenty-twenty-two holiday festival. Director Rowland?
Uh, good evening. Director of Public Works, Todd Rowland, for the record. Uh, yes, the first request we have is for the local traffic authority, which is the Board of Selectmen, um, to close Battle Street on Saturday, December tenth for the holiday festival from four P M. until seven P M. Much like we did last year, we're going to close, uh, it, close it to southbound traffic and limit, uh, northbound traffic. Um, we'll close it. We'll have an officer at the corner of, uh, Battle Street and Main Street. And we'll have, uh, D B W personnel up on the, up on Battle Street at Wood Prep. Um, we'll also have signage up at, uh, Turnpike Road, uh, Stevens Road and then also at, um, Mason and Daniel to direct them through there if they come down. Um, last year we're not quite well, honestly, and it's closing a little bit earlier this year because of seven o'clock, the church was having their bells. Um, so they changed their schedule a little bit.
Yeah, the bell ringer's, yeah.
Last year, they were going till nine, it really kind of died off at seven.
Right, the church has a, a bell ringing, uh, entertainment, uh, scheduled starting at seven P M.
Correct.
The Summers congregation church.
Very good.
Yeah, it looks very well done. I make a motion to approve the request to close Battle Street for the twenty-twenty-two holiday festival which is December tenth. Tenth, twenty-twenty-two, as presented.
Yeah, I'd be happy to second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Second item I have is, uh, the, uh, the annual spring splash, which is the last Saturday in March. Uh, every year, uh, the D E E P dam bureau does require that the town, because we will operate the gates on the dam tip needed if the flow of water is not high enough. The, uh, previous Board of Selectmen did, uh, adopt a, uh, resolution in perpetuity. However, D E E P requires a new resolution you sign early in the year. So we're requesting the Board, um, allow the first selectmen to authorize and execute the special use license with the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protections and access to water gates at the Summersville Mill Pond Dam, uh, and that the, uh, the town clerk motorized and, and would miss that. Make a motion, um, the Board of Selectmen authorize, um, the first selectmen to execute and enter in behalf of the town of Summers a special use license with the State of Connecticut, D E E P, to access the water gates at the Summersville Mill Pond Dam at forty Maple Street on Saturday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, um, as presented, with the rate date of April first.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Uh, and finally, uh, possible action, and we're requesting possible action on winter storm closing procedures for town facilities. Um, we've kind of done this, you know, on, on an ad hoc basis in the past and we wanted to, uh, clarify it a little bit more stringently on exactly what our procedure will be. Uh, in the past, what would happen is if there's a storm that I think warrants, uh, potential closure, I would contact the first selectmen and then we would talk about it and then make a decision. But because of the timing involved and getting the word out to all town staff, the town staff that would be affected would be town hall, uh, Kibbe Fuller and the recycling center particularly, also Piedmont and historical venues going on, which typically is not the case. Um, we're also proposing that like the schools and the senior buses do now, that we, the senior center follow the, uh, the school program, i.e. if they close due to a typical winter storm event or have a delay that we close or delay the senior center. Uh, there's really, in the past what we've done is we will cancel the buses, let's say if the school's closing, uh, and then the senior buses are canceled. And frankly, if that's the case and it's bad weather, no one goes there for the most part anyways.
Right.
And I don't know that we should be encouraging seniors to be on the road unless they have to be. Um, so that's part of this. Under this, this proposal, uh, I would contact the first selectmen or his designated, uh, typically at six o'clock in the morning. If he's not available, I would contact the second selectmen. If he's not available, I would contact the third selectmen and make my recommendations on closing of town facilities due to typical winter storms. This is not for a large, like an Alfred event or some hurricane or something like this. This is not as rather the buildings and winter storms we deal with every year. The closings won't, don't typically happen very often, but there are, it gives us that flexibility to do that. We have kind of a procedure in place. And town staff could have, understand, uh, the likelihood that they may be expected to report to work or not. This also does give town staff leeway if they have, if they feel it's unsafe to travel and we are opening, where they have, um, children or elders or someone that they have to care for and they need to be out, they could use their own P T O, uh, with the approval of their supervisor for these particular events. And so we'd like to include that in this consideration as well.
How, how do you, uh, ensure that this, uh, protocol, if approved this evening, gets delivered and, and understood by the different groups it, it applies to?
Sure, if we're going to close, typically what I do is contact the operations manager and she'll contact all of the directors that would be involved, that would be affected by the closure and they'll contact your staff.
Could send up in Everbridge too.
But also involves, the senior center involves the library and everything.
Well, that is the senior center and then we do, what we do is delay their closings. Um, that goes up on, on the website and yes, in Everbridge will go out and also Facebook and the typical, but we could send Everbridge to our town staff.
Right, you could make just a town group on there that you click that button and it's on.
I started to and, yeah. Then I just text everything.
That way you don't have to remember who to text.
I know who to text.
The, the only other thing I would add is, Todd, I think this is very well done and I think it's definitely something we need. Um, I think it's the expectation, you know, the facilities are closed. Um, however, um, you know, with COVID, I mean, all of our town staff have the ability to work from home now, you know, so I think that would be, you know, I mean, it's not a day off.
Encouraged, encouraged.
Right. Well, it's not a day off, but just because the facility is closed, as I'm saying, I mean, they're still, they're still being paid for the day. And there are, uh, like human services totally, totally virtual. They can work remotely. Record media can work remotely. There's a lot of offices here that could work remotely.
But they have the option to take a day off if, if they so desire, right?
Exactly, exactly. But it's not a, it's not a day off to, you know, they're, they're still being paid. Right. And they're gonna work, just they're not coming into the office because they closed the building for safety.
I think most people plan the day before, if we know what's going on.
Exactly.
Or, you know, so, you know, everybody.
Yeah, and with the new software package and.
Yeah, exactly. Prior to that, we didn't have V P N's for everybody, so everybody couldn't, but, um, yeah, and now with everything moving to the cloud, it's even easier.
Absolutely.
Oh, excellent. So, but no, this is well done. And also so you're not buried the next day.
Oh, my God.
Great job, Todd.
Um, so I am requesting that the Board approve this, this plan, um.
I'd be happy to make a motion that we, uh, approve your, uh, winter storm closing, uh, procedure for the town.
A second now.
Any further discussion?
We're gonna post this on the website with our other procedures as well, just so it's out there for the public.
Please do know.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, make sure the school knows too.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. Uh, all those in support, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Next is, uh, discussion of possible action on a recommendation of cemetery committee charges.
Yep, so, um, I met on Tuesday, myself and, uh, and Tim met with the cemetery committee. It was what I feel was a pretty productive meeting, close to an hour and a half. Um, getting an understanding of what they felt their, their role and responsibility was and what we feel their roles and responsibilities should be. Um, we, we came out of that with a, an agreement that they're going to, um, at their next, uh, regular meeting, uh, January ninth, I believe it is, they're going to, um, by then come up with a list of what they feel their roles and responsibilities should be. They're gonna send them to me.
This is something they've been working on for quite some time.
Correct. They, they've been working on this. Their, their assumption was more that they had more, um, executive authority over the operations of the cemetery than, um, than I think they really do have. Um, to the point that, I mean, they, they felt they were fiduciaries on the, on the financial, uh, monies that are involved and it's like, no, you're not.
Clearly not.
Like, that's, I was like, Mike's name is on all of those boards.
The town treasurer and.
I think we refer to this as committee creep.
Right, so, um.
That's a good term.
We, we, we came out of that with a better understanding. They're gonna send me a, an idea of what they feel, um, their role and responsibility should be. I'll review it, make, you know, my changes or put my input in as, as I feel needed. Um, and, um, we'll get them in front of you guys mid to late January is, is my goal. Um, they did request that a job description per se, um, or a responsibility list for the liaison, um, be created as well, um, and posted so that, um.
Liaison like your job is, like.
Right, so even citizens, if they go to the website and, you know, the actual liaison button should be able to be clicked and it should tell the, you know, residents what it is that the liaison's responsible for versus what the committee is responsible for.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I think I'm more concerned about the superintendent as well. I mean, I think.
I think I'm more concerned about the superintendent as well, I mean, I think the liaison's the town staff, I mean, that, but I mean, I think the superintendent as well, I think we may. Well, the, the person that, that, the sexton, yeah, sorry.
Oh, the sexton, yeah, um, I actually have to look that up and find out exactly what, um, I know we have a contract, like, agreement, um, and find out what exactly.
I think that's a good idea to include his, the scope of his responsibilities as well.
I agree as well.
Cause he's a major player.
He, he is a major player.
It has been for decades.
Yeah, they, unfortunately, right now, their meetings have been on Wednesdays at six, six or six thirty, and Wednesdays just don't work for me. I have, uh, I have other commitments, um, so they're looking to, um, adjust their meeting schedule, uh, for the next calendar year. Um, they had already set their regular meeting schedule, but they're looking to adjust it, um, to pick a different date and time that works so that I can be present at the meetings.
We also talked about, um, communications with the, the public and people that, families that are involved.
All communities should be coming through my office, um, and then, and again, that'll be part of the, the roles and responsibilities for them to understand. Uh, you know, if they have a recommendation, uh, you know, it comes to me and I'll proof it before it, it ever, um, leaves on behalf of the town.
So we're gonna be very conscious of tone of what we're doing.
And you and I, of course, speak on a daily basis, so I'll also be involved.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, absolutely, even on days that we're not working. So, yeah, there will be, um, I, I, I feel like we've got a, a nice understanding, and by late January, we should have, um, something kind of finalized for you guys to approve. Um, they are working on their rules and regulations as well, the, the packet, and looking to modify and change those. They've got a couple of policies that they're looking to, to present as well. Um, again, you know, I, I, like I told them, all of that would, would come through my office, and I would present it to you guys on their behalf. Um, if they wanna be present for that, they're more than welcome to, um, but for them to understand kind of, uh, how the chain of command works, I guess. Uh, that they're not, um, at the same level as the board.
I thought it was a very productive, uh, hour and a half we spent with them, and I think they were very appreciative of the time. And again, a lot of this, a lot of these things come down to a matter of communication and understanding what people's roles are and what, you know, the scope of their authority.
Uh, we have a lot of new members.
And we are very much a team, and we depend on them, they depend on us, so.
Absolutely, and we do have new members on there that had, had no idea, you know, the one statement was made that they were told that they were in charge of the cemetery when they came on, and that's what they thought they were supposed to do, and so, um, you know, there, there definitely has been a breakdown in communication and, and, uh.
Well, they even dug up some interesting history that went back to the nineteenth century, I think.
Yeah, really, yeah, they really did, when it was formed in the eighteen seventies, and how they paid the sexton a dollar per grave, and it was very interesting, the history that they found, but, um, yeah.
No, it's an important commission, I mean, we have some, some good volunteers on that, but I think it's clarification, the work you're doing is important, and it's good for everyone, it's good for them, it's good for us, it's good for our residents.
Yep.
Thank you, Brian, for your time.
Thank you, great.
Appreciate that, um, next is, uh, discussion of possible action on salary increases for elected officials. Uh, as you recall, members of the board, uh, last June, when we were, uh, focusing on, uh, pay raises, uh, for town employees, uh, there was a specific, uh, motion or, uh, effort to separate elected officials since we had only been in office for, at the time, uh, six months. So I believe there was interest in, uh, setting aside the, uh, whether or not it was appropriate, or what level of, uh, increase might be appropriate for elected officials, until they've been in place for a year, and they have been in place for a year now. I've included, uh, it's just, there's only two people involved, myself and Dave Marty, the town clerk. I've included, uh, some information about, uh, Mr. Marty, which I think you'll find interesting. He, in fact, put together a report which describes, uh, what his duties are, what he's accomplished since he's been on board. And, uh, he also, I believe, has included some, um, compen, uh, some information related to other, other towns of, uh, similar sizes in the town, in the state. One thing I think is important to consider with regards to Dave Marty is that, in, is the number of people that actually work in that office, the number of hours they are asked to work, and the, with regards to the level of work they have, so of course, if, if say you have, uh, you know, like in this, our case, we have a person and a half, uh, we have a half time person working with Dave, helping him, uh, there's only, whatever it is, it comes out to what, fifty hours a week of, of work that's being done, they, to cover all the jobs that the, the, uh, town clerk needs to perform. So in some of these other towns where, uh, the pay may be similar or, or less or even more, uh, you need to consider the fact that some of these other towns, they may have, uh, one or two full-time people in addition to the town clerk doing the work. And in some of these towns, actually, the town clerk's primary job is to supervise the other people in the office, not to actually do the work. In this case, he does the work, uh, so I think we're lucky to have him, and, uh, uh, so, just leave it at that, leave, any, any discussion?
What's his current salary?
Sixty seven thousand.
Sixty seven thousand.
See, here, here's a memo that he's, he's sent.
Yeah, I got it, I got that, yes, I did.
And the, I'm just giving my calculator in real.
Yeah, I, 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 I would, uh, propose that we increase his, uh, his earned salary, increase by five percent.
Thirty three fifty.
Based on his, uh, performance, so it would come out to seventy thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, which would put him, um, on the, the li, the list of, um, towns, let's see, between, uh.
Well, I get the list that Brian's given us last year, and it, for town clerk non-certified, if you gave him the raise to seventy thousand, three fifty, that would put him, uh, in the, in the second category behind, uh, Windsor Locks, non-certified people. You know, of course, according to this list that Brian gave us last year, or last January, I think, so.
Windsor Locks, what do they have for, uh?
Windsor Locks is seventy one thousand, three nine nine, and, uh, you were talking seventy three five oh.
Yeah. Just you presuming his certification.
What's that?
He is presuming.
Yeah, it, it, he, it, you can't get your certification in less than two years, but he has done everything over and above what has been required of the certification, he's gone to, uh, one week, uh, seminars, uh, out of state in New Hampshire, he's, uh, he's been involved significantly with, uh, Talon County, uh, clerks, town clerks, associations, and, uh, he's reached out to these other communities, in fact, if you look at what he provided us, it, it lists the, uh, number of people that are in each of these offices.
Wouldn't the number of transactions be a good indicator?
Yeah, he, yeah, he, well, we, we don't, I don't think we, he mentions a couple, some of the transactions, but he doesn't mention the number of dog licenses he issued, or, but he does mention the number of, um.
But as far as comps, I mean, like, I don't, I mean, obviously, you can't compare versatile summers, it's not even close to a comparison, but no, I think, based on a couple of factors, I mean, number one, I think we all remember after the election, we reduced his salary, and I mean, you know, my comments at the time, I mean, I, I think we went too low on reducing the salary, and I think he has done a good job, I mean, I think in light of inflation and, and everything else, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that, I mean, a couple of things, I mean, number one, it's gonna require a board of finance approval, um, and I'm fine with it, you know, for, I mean, number one, you know, we need the money, and I think number two, based on what's happened in the past, I think it's just the most transparent thing to do, you know, a mid-year salary adjustment.
We have it, we have it in the, the pool still, but we will require a transfer from, from the pool to the line item.
Yeah, I think we, I, I'm fine with it as long as, you know, we then forward it to the board of finance, I don't know why they wouldn't support it, but it's obviously their, you know, their choice, but I think.
As Brian said, the funds are available in the line item that were not used, uh, that had been provided in the budget for this year, so it's a matter of a transfer.
Yeah, so I just think for transparency, for a lot of reasons, I think it's just best to have the board of finance approval as well, and.
Yeah, I think they have to see any personal services or employee, uh, salary transfers, line item transfers.
And when will we make it effective, we make it?
I was gonna say, I would need an effective date, and I could draw up the transfer amount for their meeting in, uh, in a couple of weeks. I would need to know what the effective date is, so I can count how many payrolls from there.
So if it's January first, would that be maybe half of the year?
What, what's a pay, what's a pay, a, a pay date that would be appropriate, um, close to the first of January?
It's just, uh, wait, wait, so, we have a pay period that starts on January one.
Well, that would be, may, be appropriate then.
Okay, okay, so I'd make a motion then, um, that the board of selectmen, um, I guess approve a salary increase of, um, five percent, um, for the town clerk effective January first, twenty twenty three, subject to approval of the board of finance.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor of the mo, any further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And as far as I'm concerned, that's up, up to you to figure out which one.
And then for, for other elected officials, you mean?
Yes.
So I guess my, my thoughts, I mean, number one, I think as far as the first selectman's salary goes, um, you know, a number of years since we've had an increase, um, I think, you know, certainly, um, I'm okay with an increase, um, I think that the best way to do it, um, would be to put it into the budget and make it effective July one, but I think also when we put it in the budget, to keep in mind that there was no increase last year, you know, so this increase may be a little bit larger than, say, we normally would, only because there was no increase. Um, and I think if we did it that way, um, it would go through the, the process, it would be, you know, it should be broken out as its own line item, I know we had discussed that before, you know, first selectman's salary just being a standalone line item on the budget, um, and then it would go through the board of finance process, and it would then go through the town meeting process, and then it would go to effective July one. Um, I think that would be, then I don't think anyone could argue the fact that we gave a salary increase, and again, I'd ask them to, to keep in mind that we haven't had one for a number of years, and that, you know, it may be more than, say, a three percent, just because we haven't had one for a number of years.
I think the last time was nineteen?
Yeah.
I believe it was the last time it was increased.
Two thousand nineteen?
Yeah, I can, I can look back, but I, that's my, it's not what I had, that seems correct.
Well, again, you had given us the salaries, um, you know, uh, Summers is at ninety three, two eight, um, that's, uh, you know, below Ellington, which is at ninety six, um, you know, look, it was similar population size, fairly competitive, um, so, yeah. But if you gave, uh, you know, five or six percent raise, probably would be, uh, within the range.
Is that okay, I mean, does that sound okay though, that if, I mean, does that seem fair? I know, obviously, you have a conflict, Tim, but I mean, does it seem fair that, that, you know, we would, and I'm not asking, I mean, just to, to follow that process, cause I think that no one could attack it, it's not completely transparent, you know, and.
It's up to you, I'm, I've, I've got no comment, um.
Okay, cause you're the only one that didn't get a raise last year, especially now that we just gave Dave Marty a raise, I mean, you're the only one that didn't get one, so.
Yeah, I mean, it, as I said, the first selectman's salary's been set since two thousand nineteen.
Till two thousand nineteen, pretty sure.
I can, I can verify that.
Yeah, that's, that's what it is, it's true.
Well, you know, to be vertically honest with you, I would not be opposed to giving, you know, uh, this elect, first selectman a raise at the same time we give one to Mr. Marty personally. Um, especially since it's been three years since, uh, there has been a raise in this first selectman's office, but. I don't, I don't have any real partiality to waiting to July first.
I know it just becomes a very controversial subject, and I wanna just make sure that everyone, that there's no accusations, cause I think that.
Yeah, we've had a history in the past where, uh, raises have been given to, the first selectman has given himself a raise without any input from the board of finance, board of selectmen.
Twenty nineteen was, uh, the last time, it went from eighty eight thousand to the current salary now, that was the last time that that salary was adjusted. So we're four fiscal years since then, you know, our fourth fiscal year or something like that.
That, that's why I'm not opposed to giving it to him in January, but if you're not ready to go that way, it's okay, but I, I would be more than happy to do it on January first with Mr. Marty, and I would certainly be happy to entertain a five percent increase like we gave Mr. Marty. And that would be roughly about, uh, I'd already multiplied this out, roughly four thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, is that correct, Ryan? Of the ninety three.
Four thousand, six sixty four.
Okay, I rounded it off, sorry.
I mean, could we, could we take the temperature of the board of finance at the, their December twentieth, I mean, I don't mind attending myself to even speak of it, to just see their appetite for it, or if they're, they're agreeable to it, you know, I mean, we could, we could do that as well, to just see, you know, what their feedback input is and. Yeah.
I just think since it's been three years, I, you know, and we politely asked, uh, first selectman to wait a year, he has.
He has, okay.
And, uh, so I think that he's done everything we asked him to do, I think he's been patient, so I think, I don't think it's, if we're giving one to Mr. Marty, we should give one to the select.
Yeah, cause I mean, the whole forty, six hundred wouldn't have to be transferred, cause it's only a half year, so it's twenty three hundred bucks every year.
Yeah, right, there you go.
And the funds are available, I mean, the funds are in the budget, you're not appropriating anything, I mean, I don't.
And they're there, yeah.
Yeah, it's just making a transfer at this point.
I don't know if you, well, I guess you'd let them know, obviously, but I don't know if you need to ask them for permission for something like that.
I think we do for any midterm, especially for elected official, I mean, I think we're in dangerous territory if we don't, you know, ask them just from a.
We could do that, it's not.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll, I'll see by.
And you want me to draw up the same transfer and have it there, and?
Yes, yes, I'd like it ready to go.
Yes. Yeah, there you go, exactly.
Yeah, and I, I'm just, and so that way, if they're ready to do it, they'll do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you guys, I mean, you would start to approve it, and then I'll, um.
So you have to approve this grant. Then we'll, uh, put it in front of the board.
I just, my fear is though.
When, when is their next meeting?
December twentieth.
So you'd like us, you'd like us to make a motion to approve?
You guys have one meeting before the board.
Well, my only fear, Bob, my only fear is that if we approve it tonight and they deny it, then it's denied, you know, if we take their temperature and we work together on it, I think, you know, that there's a really good chance of putting it into the budget, again, I'm fine as long as the board of finance is, but I just, I don't wanna see it, say, get denied, and then it puts us into a, kind of a dilemma.
All right, just that we don't meet until January, correct?
Well, we can make it retroactive too, I mean, that's not a problem.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah, you can do that.
Yeah, we can make it retroactive to January first, just like we did.
Okay, all right, we'll do, okay.
No, no problem with that, yeah, I have no problem with that.
All right. Yeah, oh, and ju- just on, in my meetings, uh, the meeting, the first week there into January, I have a, I'm gonna be out of town there, I was just wondering if we could change the meeting.
You're traveling again?
Yeah, not very far.
We meet every single week over January.
Yeah, you.
I know, that, that's why I just want to change to a Wednesday, I just wanna do a Wednesday, rather than a Thursday.
Do you do a different day that we? A Wednesday? Let me just take a look, the.
Yeah, I just, and I just thought if I talked to you now, maybe there would be a possibility.
It's the fifth, Bob, the fifth that you can't do?
Uh, the, the first, when the first, uh, let me just get the calendar up here for January, it's the, um, the January fifth meeting?
I can't do Wednesday, but I could do Tuesday, could you do Tuesday, or?
Tuesday?
Yeah, the third.
Yeah, it'd be fine.
Okay, is that okay?
You have to post the agenda by the twenty ninth, just so you know.
Okay.
Just giving you a heads up.
Thanks for the heads up.
Is that okay, then it's okay with you?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be, I'm not going anywhere.
Okay.
Yeah, I just.
So when are we doing twelve three?
One three.
One three.
One three, sorry.
Twenty three.
Don't confuse me.
I'm sorry.
Don't make me come in.
I'd be Saturday.
Brian mentioned twelve.
All right.
At six P M?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, thank you for the flexibility.
So, I, I guess, my, my question is, is there's kind of a motion on the table, or what are we doing as far as, uh, salary of first selectman goes? Not that clear.
Let's present it, the twentieth at the board of finance?
Twentieth, yes.
Let's present it the twentieth, I'll, I'll go to the meeting and present it.
It'll be presented as a transfer, or, or what?
Let's just take their temperature and, and see, you know, what.
Do I have to send them a Christmas card, is that the deal?
No, it's okay.
They weren't exactly on my list, uh, you know. Do I have to bow their way?
Go ahead.
Okay.
So what's next on our agenda here? So what's next on our agenda here? Discussion of possible action on the town pension plan amendment.
Yes.
This is something that, uh, Director Marinaccio and I have discussed, and, uh, what we're requesting is currently the, uh, pension, uh, regulations allow for the payment, the, the, the pension payment to be based on the, uh, last five years of an employee's, uh, employment, that the average of the salary for the last five years. What we're seeking is an amendment that would basically say any five years within the prior tenure period.
Consecutive five years?
Uh, consecutive five years, right, uh, and, and the reason for that is that it, it builds in additional flexibility with, uh, the management of the town employees. If you want someone to, uh, to remain, uh, their, their employment to be, remain with the town, but maybe at a less salary or less, uh, less responsibilities, that could be taken advantage of where, because of the experience this person has, uh, and they wouldn't jeopardize their, um, their pension payment uh, by taking, uh, receiving less money, say, for an additional year or two, uh, and to the benefit of the town. So it gives the town more flexibility to take advantage of the experience and talents of town employees, uh, to the maximum extent possible. So that, that intent, that language requires an amendment to the plan, and that's in your package. Um, and along, it's, it changes the, uh, Article One, Section One, six, the average, the definition of average annual earnings. This, uh, this amendment has been drawn up by the, uh, our pension attorney, uh, Robinson Cole, Bruce Barth. So he, he has reviewed it, and he has, he says that the language is very common in, in many of the other plans that he oversees. I, uh, did some further research at the suggestion of, um, Selectmen Lyer, and, uh, had discussion with my actuarial partner at Hooker and Holcomb, and he says that the change does not affect any actuarial calculations, it doesn't impact anything financially, and in fact, he also says that it's a very common, uh, it's a common term, the, the, the last tenure period.
So this would enable somebody to retire and then work part-time?
Yeah, or, or, you know, or to retire, or to even just stay on full-time but work, uh, at a, in a different position, or for even a lesser pay.
Yeah, yeah.
Just allows that flexibility instead of saying, um.
Yeah, got it.
It, it takes some of the rigidity out of the current system and. Now finally, I, I also reached out to, uh, the chairman of our pension committee, who says that he, uh, fully approves this change, he thinks it's an excellent idea. So I, I think I've covered the basis in terms of making sure that, uh, everybody's on board with this. You have the final say on this, uh, and you would have to authorize, as you did with, uh, amendment number one earlier this year, you'd have to authorize Tim, uh, the first selectman to, uh, sign it, so.
Yeah.
So in this case, we need a motion today?
You do.
Okay.
No, I think, I think you've covered everything, and I think, uh, this is in line with most pension plans, and I think it's twelve written, so I'd make a motion to approve pension amendment two, um, as presented, to authorize the first selectman to execute that amendment.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion passed, thank you. Next on the agenda are the approval of the minutes of November, the meeting, Board of Selectmen meeting on November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, regular meeting. I, I reviewed these and, uh, provided any edits that were required.
Diagnose corrections.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine to me, too.
Very good. Um, so we need a motion to, uh, approve the minutes.
Yeah, I'd have to make a motion to approve the minutes of the November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed, thank you, and a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Or adjourned.